First, is everyone here in presence?
Yeah.
Great.
John, just a heads up, you, do you know that the, um, just a heads up that the minutes were not included in the packet? So I don't know if you want to approve the minutes, but I just wanted to flag it for you before we go live.
Okay.
None of us have really read them.
Okay, so let's table them to the next meeting. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, perfect.
Somebody's not.
It sounds like a baby.
Sorry, guys. Yep, that's, that's Charlie.
Tom, are you in? I promoted you to a panelist, so you should be able to talk.
That's the first time I've ever been promoted, and thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And, and, uh, yes, I am here. Thank you.
Okay, are we live?
We are live. You're ready to go.
All right, thank you, Sabrina. Okay, welcome everyone to the Planning Committee of the Common Council. We'll call, now call this meeting in order at 7:03 PM and do a roll call. Tom Livingston.
Here.
Lisa Shanahan.
Here.
Barbara Smith.
Here.
George Serenides.
Here.
Tom Keegan.
Here.
Dar- Darlene Young.
Here.
And Don Kites, I am also present. Okay. All right, so, um, we have public participation. Sabrina, has anyone signed up to speak?
We have Diane on the line. Diane, if you want to speak, raise your hand and I'll allow you to speak. Oh, there. Diane, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, everybody. Thanks, Sabrina. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, you're all set.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to jump on quick because on your, um, agenda tonight, you have the approval for the, peer consultants for traffic review in the city. Um, there were two consultants were chosen for a peer review going forward. And one of the consultants is WSP. And I just wanted to, um, address you tonight because, um, I think that there could be a conflict of interest potentially in, um, particular areas of the city that WSP could be called upon to do a peer review for on development. And I realize that the other consultant that's chosen, um, that you have two of them specifically for that purpose. And if you have two in place in case there is a conflict or there's some, um, timing or project work where one couldn't commit to doing the work. But my concern with WSP, I actually, um, spoke with Don Kites the other day to raise this, and that's why I'm here tonight to speak, is that, um, this, um, consultant group is the program consultant for the Walkbridge project. And, um, their actual description for that, um, job that they have with them is to act as an extension of the Connecticut DOT staff and assisting in the coordination of the design consultants and man- uh, management of the contractors. The reason why that's important is that the Walkbridge project itself is not just the walk bridge over the river. It actually touches on, um, a number of neighborhoods and goes all the way from, uh, South Norwalk, um, over into East Norwalk and beyond. And the impact of the work that's going to be done also impacts, um, the East Avenue widening and lowering project and the replacement of multiple bridges within the East Norwalk. So there's a lot of work that's associated with the Walkbridge that aren't, that isn't right out the bridge itself. WSP, because of their relationship with that project, could be called upon, and in fact, they were recently called upon to be the peer review for the traffic analysis, um, for a development in East Norwalk. Um, the most recent one was the Norden Warehouse Development that you may all re- recall that was just, um, withdrawn. And so the concern there is that, um, there's a potential conflict of interest, not necessarily financially, but because they represent the interests of the DOT and the Walkbridge project, they, when they're considering traffic impact, uh, within those areas for another development, they may not, um, you know, be fully taking into account the impact on the community versus a potential benefit to the Walkbridge project or to the East Avenue project. And the example I gave to Mr. Kites is that, um, in the, in the, um, the one that had to do with Norden, the applicant for that development had actually recommended changing the width of a local street to be able to accommodate their tractor trailer trucks. And anything to do with changing the width or reconfiguring East Avenue or Fitch Street or Strawberry Hill or anything to do with the lights would also impact the project that's directly related to the Walkbridge. And it could have an unintended benefit to, um, that project. Or conversely, they could come back and they could say that, um, a traffic plan isn't appropriate because they might feel that it has a negative impact on the Walkbridge project. Now, I just want to clarify, as, as I told Mr. Kites, that I'm not suggesting that this would happen or that it would be intentional, but I'm saying that because it is a potential conflict of interest and we are working with a rather large area that's impacted by what's going to be very heavy development, we think, in the next five years, the same timeframe of the Walkbridge project. That, um, if you do approve WSP, um, as one of the two, uh, primary traffic peer review consultants, that whenever there's a development that needs that review done, um, that you, um, i- insist that the, um, that Mr. Kleppin and his staff, um, allocate that review to the alternate, um, peer review company. Just so that, that WSP, one, that they're not put in the position by the city, um, inadvertently, um, within their company. And two, um, so that, you know, if they did have it, that they didn't inadvertently, um, you know, speak out in favor or against something that would impact the Walkbridge. So I'm sorry, that was kind of long-winded, but I just wanted you to kind of get the gist of what the concern is there. And since, uh, Mr. Kleppin, um, through the regulations, um, saw to it that there's always an alternate. I don't think that this would be a burden, but I would leave it to him and his staff to advise you, um, if that would be the case. Or perhaps, um, a third consultant would be needed, um, just based on, you know, what's going to be very heavy development in East Norwalk. And actually, I, I, I'm not speaking for South Norwalk, but, um, I would, I would imagine that the same impact is there as well, um, with development and the Walkbridge project. I'm happy to take any questions, and otherwise, I thank you for your time.
Just have a comment, John, if I can. Chairman?
John, you're muted.
John, you're muted, yeah.
Apologize. Yes, Charlie?
I, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, to Ms. Cece that it is okay that she says something in support of South Norwalk. We, she's been that kind of person in every part of the community, so clearly, Ms. Cece, we are fine with you, supporting South Norwalk and mentioning South Norwalk. I appreciate you.
Thanks, and I'll just clarify too that I'm just speaking as a resident. I wasn't speaking on behalf of ENNA, but just wanted to clarify that. Yeah, and I'm happy, um, we all look out for each other there, Ms. Young.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone else signed up to speak, Sabrina?
No, I believe it's just the stenographer on the line.
Okay. We will now, we'll now close the public participation portion of this meeting and move on to item one, administration. And that is the approval of the minutes of February 4th, 2021 meeting. And, uh, right quick, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to table this item to the next, until our April Planning Committee meeting. All in favor, please raise your hand to signify yes. That's, uh, Mr. Keegan, are you in favor of that?
Yes.
Tabling the issue with the, uh, peer review traffic.
No, no, tabling the minutes as there was, they were not included in our backup information.
That's fine, yes.
Okay, great. All right.
Yes.
The motion passes, uh, that will be tabled to our next meeting. And, uh, Sabrina, can you just make sure when we get our next agenda that the meeting, the minutes from the previous, uh, meeting are
Yep.
Also attached. Great, thank you.
For sure. Nope.
Okay, moving on to new business item one A, that's to authorize Mayor Harry W. Reeling to execute separate master services agreements with WSP USA and AKRF for an on-call professional consulting service to be performed on as needed and as needed basis related to peer traffic review. The scope of the work will be performed pursuant to the individual letters of agreement detailing the scope of work for each project. Service will be paid for by individual applicants with the department. Would someone like to move that? Uh, Mr. Livingston, thank you. Um, yes, Mr. Kleppin, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you for a few minutes tonight. I'll just pick up, I'll give you a, like a treetops overview of kind of what the proposal is. Few, a few years ago, we put in amendment to the zoning regulations to, uh, allow the zoning commission to have some outside, assistance with certain kinds of applications. The two principal uses we have for this are, one, for traffic review and two, for architectural planning services that might be needed. Uh, it, it's done for several reasons. One, it's, um, you know, rightly or wrongly, sometimes when, when an application comes into the city, it gets reviewed at the staff level, staff makes comments. You know, the applicant has their team of consultants that are offering their views and responding to questions and comments that come up. It's often noted that, you know, that the city is, you know, wrongly or rightly, you know, sometimes looking at things a different lens, so it's good to have a second set of eyes look at these applications. And particularly with sensitive traffic issues such as the Norden application where we had outside peer review looking at things and making suggestions on those applications on the architectural planning side. They often focus on design of the building, so we use them a lot in our larger projects and in the downtown. Uh, one most recently that was done was Wall Street Place, which you may recall had a lot of concern related to what, what it was actually going to look like in the end. So our peer review architect, you know, really drills down into the, the items that he's looking at in terms of the design standards, the building form, uh, the window type, uh, how large the windows are. They really get very specific. We have put in per Ms. Cece's comments, she is correct, we do have multiple consultants on board if there is a conflict of interest. For example, uh, WSP, we couldn't use them up at the BLT proposal up at North Seven because they had worked for BLT in the past, so they, when they get a proposal from us, they look who the players are, and if they've worked with them before, they've recused themselves from the process or they're not involved. I, I don't see any issue with WSP doing work in East Norwalk just because the East Avenue corridor is technically part of the Walkbridge program. I don't see how that would be a compliment, I, I, because this DOT is not an applicant in front of the city on an application. If that was the case, then obviously we wouldn't be using them, which is why we have a, a second firm on board to handle those kind of situations. We, we've started the process, like I said, 2016. We've been doing it for three years. The contracts for the firms that were hired are up. We did second set of interviews. We have a little deeper bench now, I think, too, to handle some projects. One issue we ran in with some of the design reviews, we had a couple of large projects occurring at the same time. So we had to, uh, you know, juggle both of those, and I think it added a little time to the approval process. So we want to have an additional firm on board to try to farm out a little work to one firm versus the other, so we can move things along as quickly as possible.
Any questions for Steve?
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Tom.
Mr. Livingston. Put this in the context of the Chick-fil-A, right, where there's been, there are real traffic issues and they had a traffic consultant. Had this been in place, would that have made a difference? I mean, how would that have worked?
I, it's hard to say. I wasn't here when that application was approved and the process wasn't in place at that time. That's also, um, you know, DOT is also going to look at that project as well, since that's on the Route One corridor. But it, it could have. I mean, I think we're definitely with Chick-fil-A for, for certain, and we're much more cognizant of the queuing and that, the potential backups that happen with any kind of drive-through restaurant now, you know, going forward. But it, that might have been something that was flagged. We, we've done that with several projects where they've made suggestions about the circulation on the site, and, and I can think one at the, uh, the Greek, the, the Greek Orthodox Church, um, up towards the Wilton Line where they had made several recommendations about internal drop-off of the, uh, the children that would be coming in by car, so they made recommendations there to improve pedestrian safety within the site as well as, uh, vehi- vehicular circulation.
When will you bring these guys in?
It's, it, it's on a project-by-project basis, so we don't have to do it on any, on any project if the commission has concerns. And it, it, the scope could vary significantly on the project. It could be very minor issues, or where we just want to get a second set of eyes, or it could be triggered by the, the scope and the scale of the project that where it's such where it's going to be a very large development with, you know, maybe it's in an area of town where we already know that there are concerns about the level of service at intersections, so we want to make sure what they're proposing is not going to exacerbate that situation.
Okay, so you'll put them out when the, the commission wants more information? You'll get somebody out there? Is that how it works?
Yeah, so sometimes it could be a staff recommendation that we'd like to have some assistance with the review, or it could be the commission saying, you know, something that could come up in a public hearing based on a comment of a resident that, that, you know, maybe we hadn't thought of or the commission hadn't thought of. And they'll say, you know what, that makes sense, let's have a second set of eyes brought in to look at this.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Keegan.
Yes, Mr. Keegan. You have the floor.
If I may ask, Miss, if I may ask, uh, Mr. Kleppin, uh, Ms. Cece, I think brings up a valid point, uh, about the, uh, that one group, and, uh, I, I think that, uh, we need to look at that a little more closely. Uh, I asked some questions earlier today, um, concerning the, the consultants that have been chosen. Are there other options, Steve, other than the two that were actually chosen?
Yeah, so we interviewed, I, I think, three firms, and those were the two that the selection committee felt were the most qualified and would be the best fit to work with the city.
Yeah, a- as a result, I didn't get any information. I don't think any of the, of the other committee members got any information on the, uh, the consultants that were chosen by the committee. So, uh, if the process is proper, I, I would like to offer that we table this, uh, until we get some more information from these, uh, these two groups. I'd be more comfortable if I, I knew a little bit more about them. And again, I would just want to bring up the, the point that Ms. Cece made about them having a, a huge footprint on the Walkbridge project. I think that could be a conflict of interest, and I'm uncomfortable with that.
There's a, I guess before I, um, call for a vote on the motion to table, are there any other questions for Steve? Okay. Um, just before I call that vote, Steve, so if, if this motion were to pass, what, what information do you think would be, you'd be sending out to the committee to better help them, uh, understand this better?
What I could do is I could get the RFP responses and send that. I mean, I would, to me, it kind of puts us in a little bit of a bind because the contracts have expired. We recently got an extension for the two existing contracts that were actually put through Common Council, I think, a week ago, and WSP was one of those firms. And, you know, this, I, I understand it wasn't through the same process, but that issue was never raised then. I mean, we've worked with them for three years now. It has not been a problem, which is one of the reasons why we have two firms versus one. I, I mean, to be honest, the, the typical applications that come through are, are zoning commission purviews, and, and that, that's the body that makes the decision, and is the body tasked with making those decisions, not, not others? So I, I mean, I would hope we could move this through.
Personally, no. I mean, I'm always one to definitely lean towards the direction as the department, I mean, to the, to the company that the department had and the department, and as a whole, will be dealing with. I mean, you're boots on the grounds and, you know, have the experience with this group. So I always, um, you know, obviously with, with, with the finances aside, the, um, going with, with the department, you know, uh, with, you know, with their preference, you know, I know it's, um, it's important to me. So anyway, that being said, I will now call for a motion to table this item to the next Planning Committee meeting. Um, I'll do a roll call vote. You grab a pen. Mr. Livingston?
No.
Ms., uh, Ms. Shanahan?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Serenides?
No.
Um, Ms. Young?
No.
And, uh, Mr. Keegan? Mr. Keegan, this is a motion of, we're calling, I call for a vote.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, and I am a no. So that is six, uh, uh, the motion fails, uh, six to one. Okay, um, before I call for the, a vote on the item itself, uh, is there any other questions for Steve? Okay, seeing none, and thank you for addressing, um, uh, Diane's issues, and I hope that, that's something that you will, uh, keep on top of.
Certainly.
All right, um, all in favor, please raise your hand to signify yes. Mr. Keegan?
No, uh, yeah, I'm a no.
Okay, so six to one, the, the item passes. Okay, next item on the agenda is item one B, authorize Mayor Harry W. Reeling to execute separate master services agreements with DeCaro and Dahl, BFG Planning and Andriopolis Design Associates, no relation, for on-call professional consulting services to be performed on as needed basis related to peer architectural planning review. The scope of the work will be performed pursuant to individual letters and agreement detailing the scope of the work for each project. Service will be paid by the individual applicants with the department. Would someone like to move that? Thank you, Barbara. Mrs. Smith, um, okay, Steve, you want to speak to this item as well?
Sure, I'm sorry, I think I spoke to both items as a single item. Um, very similar. So as I mentioned, we do peer review, uh, work with architectural design. We have several areas within the city that have specific design standards that have to be met by the applicant. Um, and we don't have a staff architect on, 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 on the team to look at these in the kind of detail that we would like to see happen. I think Norwalk has evolved over the last, you know, well before I got here, but to the point now where we really want to make sure what's proposed is a quality design, very attractive in terms of not the architecture, but also the streetscape, um, the public realm areas. So it's good to have that extra set of eyes look at these. It's important to note that what we're trying to do is not cause too much expense for the applicant. We know, we don't want to just spend their money unnecessarily. Um, we want to do this as expeditiously as possible, but it's good to have that second set of eyes. And I think most of them would grudgingly tell you that the end product that comes out of this is a better design than what they started with. Because I, it's like anything collaborative, that the more set of eyes from a qualified person just leads to a better outcome of, at the final product.
Okay, seeing none. All in favor of the item, please raise your hand to signify yes. Mr. Keegan? Tom?
I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, you're a yes minimum. Okay, the item, and I'm also a yes. The item passes unanimously. Okay, moving on, let's see, authorized director of planning and zoning to execute the letters of agreement for both traffic peer review services and architectural planning peer review services for individual projects on as needed basis to authorize the work to be done. I mean, I, I don't know if you want to speak to this, Steve, it seems pretty much, uh, you kind of covered it, but if you'd like to, please feel free.
I've listened to myself enough, so I'm good.
Come on, Steve. Okay, um, would like to move that item. Thank you, George, Mr. Serenides. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand to signify yes. Mr. Keegan? Okay, yes, the item passes unanimously. Okay, Steve, thank you for your time. And if you don't mind, please, uh, try to attend the, uh, please attend the, uh, the council meeting on Tuesday, if you can, please.
That's on my calendar.
Great. All right, you have a good night.
Good, thanks.
Okay, next item up is two, and, uh, is an update on the South Norwalk TOD study. I believe we have Mr. Bedoli with us tonight. Brian, are you there?
I'm here, sir. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, doing well. Good evening, everyone. All right, so yeah, I just wanted to provide a brief update on the South Norwalk, uh, station area plan that we've been working on. Um, I know a number of you were at our, our public outreach meeting on Thursday that represented sort of the initiation of the project, um, with the public. We've been about three months into a nine-month planning study, taking a look at the immediate area around the train station from a couple of perspectives, obviously looking at the development opportunities that exist in the area, but also looking at ways to engage with the community to get feedback and, you know, help, you know, take that information and use it to influence our plans. Um, at this stage, we've really just taken a dive into the existing conditions, uh, making sure that we're aware of everything that's already been done in the area from a planning perspective. And with that information, we went out to the public to just, you know, introduce the project, get some feedback. We had about seventy participants in the public outreach meeting, so it was, it was rather well-attended. Uh, I subsequently presented to District B after that on, uh, that, this Monday, um, with Darlene. So I appreciated that invite and got some really good feedback in terms of, uh, you know, the neighborhood impacts that this project could create and sort of where we're heading with it all. Um, in terms of next steps, what we're looking to do is now we're going to go into the process of, okay, we have the existing conditions data. We have the input from the community. We're going to try to start putting together some initial recommendations for the area and the station, both from a development perspective, but also a big component's going to be sort of transportation, mobility, and this, you know, connectivity of the area to other neighborhoods. You know, and the, one of the themes is we kind of talked about in the public outreach meeting was that there's a lot of private development that's kind of ongoing. A lot of that's, you know, stemming from the work that you all did as part of the 2017, you know, rezoning and the TOD plan and all of that being implemented. And then there's a great opportunity on the, the western side of the tracks to take a look at some of the, uh, the publicly controlled assets like Leroy Downs, uh, the Snoo site, and what can, what can we do to sort of bridge the gap between the two and make sure that they're all planned well together and functioning well together? So that's really the intent of, of this, you know, project. So as part of that, we're going to be kind of mapping out all these different scenarios and engaging with you all around them to figure out, you know, what makes the most sense moving forward. From there, we're going to test sort of the feasibility from an economic, environmental, and social perspective. A couple of themes that I discussed in the, in the public outreach meeting were, um, obviously the great opportunity that we're kind of talking about, the development opportunity, the community opportunity, but there's a tremendous need for balance, and I think that is the, the key thing that I keep going back to as part of this. You know, there's a lot of economic opportunity in the area that exists, but we want to try to maximize the public good for everybody as part of this work, and that's really the, the benefit of a public-private partnership, which is what we're looking at here, is figuring out how we could derive the most public good from any investment in the area. Um, from there, we're going to do some feasibility analyses, uh, test the scenarios, and then develop an implementation plan as a group and figure out, you know, what makes the most sense and how we could try to get some, attract some federal-state investment to do, you know, projects that would be a little bit more difficult to achieve at the local level. So that was really just a general update. I didn't know if there's any specific questions that anyone has or anything you'd like me to touch on?
Anyone? Barbara?
Yeah, uh, were there any surprises? You know, I was, um, I, I was, uh, took part in the meeting last week. Were there any surprises in terms of the feedback from the public?
Yeah, I don't know if I could really classify it as a surprise, but there was a lot of, of great information that we obtained. And I think what, you know, we relied a lot on interactive exercises to kind of leave that open-ended. So, you know, we kind of let it open for surprises in general in terms of what it could be. Um, we did see a lot of interest in green space, which was, I think, I was, that was one area that I think I was a little bit shocked to see as a primary focus. There was a lot of interest in maintaining public realm space and green space around the train station area, and that's already sort of influenced our thought process in terms of when we're starting to think about how we go about designing these things and integrating with the development.
Yeah, that was, I noticed, yeah.
Oh, did you? Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so I thought that was great. I mean, that was a little bit of a surprise. And then a big focus on green infrastructure, too. You know, I think, you know, as I approached these things, I, I, I said in the meeting, you know, we're looking at it from a perspective of responsible real estate development, so I'm naturally thinking of the environmental impact that these products are going to have and integrating green infrastructure. But it was great to hear people really voicing that and echoing that, so we're going to be making sure that that's, you know, a key part of this project.
Excellent.
And equity number, and one of the word cloud exercises, I think that is, was, you know, the other, the big piece, and that was echoed at the District B meeting, and we want to make sure that that's a huge focus.
Great.
Hey, so Brian, what's, what's the next sort of, uh, milestone for you guys?
Yeah, so over the next four to six weeks, we're going to be developing some ideas, right? And then we're going to be kind of circulating those, having discussions between departments, figuring out what makes the most sense, and then coming out with another public outreach meeting. That'll be the next milestone. I'm hoping in the, you know, April, May, I'm trying to, we're trying to get through this, you know, the, the product is a nine-month planning process. To stay on schedule, it would be done by the end of June.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Brian, let's pencil you in. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I ju- I just had something, John, if I may.
Okay, of course, Mr. Keegan.
Brian, the, the presentation last week was fantastic, and I, I loved it. I thought it was, it was really well done. Um, the, the, you mentioned the word balance, and, and I mentioned this, uh, in one of my comments at that, uh, uh, meeting, and I, I bring it up again, that the balance not only has to exist in the, in this development, but that the balance has to extend throughout the city as well. That connectivity throughout the city, mobility throughout the city has to be thought of in terms of this. We, we have to be careful of, of creating pockets- We, we have to be careful of, of creating pockets of development that are just, uh, uh, you know, that just exist in one place. And, and I think that as we move forward with this and with other developments like the East Norwalk TOD or the Wall Street area, that we're thinking about how all of that links together throughout the city so that we create one cohesive unit and not disparate, uh, uh, sort of entities.
Yeah, and that, that's definitely well-heard, you know, it's interesting, because we have a community asset in a neighborhood, but it's also a regional asset. So there's a lot of scales that this, this particular, uh, infrastructure, uh, item, you know, serves. So we're trying to be cognizant of that and also the general market as well, so that's definitely a key point.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any questions for Brian? Okay, all right, Brian, so let's pencil you in for the April meeting and hopefully we have another update. And if you could please, any, any public hearings, any information you feel relevant to share, not just this committee, but the council as a whole, if you, if you can, please.
Absolutely.
Great, look forward to hearing more.
All right, thank you, everyone, nice to see you all.
Have a good night. Okay, pressing the wrong button here. Next up, we have another, um, and we have a little bit of an introduction here, item three A, it's an introduction, uh, update with Jim Travers, Director of Transportation, Parking Mobility, and Garrett, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name, Bollella correctly, Assistant Director.
You got it.
Oh, nice, there you go. Uh, yeah, I know, I appreciate you guys being here, um, to give us an update. Uh, I was told you have, uh, some initiatives, some plans you'd like to share with the group and, uh, kind of get a little, uh, face-to-face time with you guys. So please, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you very much, um, thanks for the, yeah, your opportunity to, to meet you. That, I mean, really, the plan for today is like, we only have a couple of weeks under our belt, so I don't know that we have, uh, that much of, of, of plans, uh, to, to present to you today. Uh, it was more just an opportunity to, to meet you. Uh, we look forward to trying to get a little bit of a better weather where we could actually go out and, uh, you'll call upon you just to, you'll maybe walk some of your streets, uh, hear from you directly, some of the challenges, concerns, um, you know, and desires that, that you might have, um, you know, we just, you know, this was more just, uh, you're wanting to say hi than, than, than anything else. And to, you, you also get you to see our faces if there's things that you have before we even get in touch with you, um, that you just give us a call, uh, and, and I think, but we kind of just wanted to go to chat, uh, and to see if there's any questions you had that you wanted to, to raise to us. Um, but more was just a, I think, just a brief, like, hi. And, uh, and, and really, we look forward to working with you, we see a lot of opportunity. You know, we've been, I've been doing this for a little while, um, and, uh, so, so for, for me, in case any of you don't know, um, you know, I, I started the Transportation, Traffic and Parking Department, uh, for the city of New Haven under then Mayor DiStefano. Um, Mayor DiStefano then, um, uh, uh, after winning, uh, the longest-serving sitting mayor for the city of New Haven, he opted to retire, uh, hence, uh, where I went and then, uh, took over and, uh, basically started, uh, a city department again, uh, under, uh, Mayor Martin, uh, in Stanford, um, and working my way up the, the, the coastline. Um, really, uh, you know, had an opportunity to, to meet the team here, I thought Jessica was super fantastic. I think we got along from the very moment we started to talk and, and we talked even before the interest, uh, came into play. Um, you know, just being close in, in the, in the neighbors, uh, that were here. Um, you know, Garrett, uh, you know, was my assistant in, uh, in Stanford, so I was really lucky enough, uh, that, that he, he chose to, to, to look here as well. You know, Garrett, super guy, so there's, there's thirty-one PTOEs, so he's a, he's a professional engineer, but there's thirty-one in addition to, to being a, a professional engineer, there's thirty-one PTOEs, which is a professional transportation operations engineer in Connecticut. And Garrett is, uh, I believe the only one in a municipality. And then in a very short order, uh, Garrett is going to be testing this spring for an RSP, so Road Safety Professional, uh, which is, uh, you know, a continuing, uh, education training. And, uh, when he receives that, uh, that, that title, uh, he will be one of seven, and the only one of seven in the state and the only one in a municipality to hold that title as well. So he is a super talented guy, I'm very lucky to have him on the team, I think we're all lucky to have him here. Uh, you know, I think Garrett and I share a lot of similar values, uh, of, of, of community engagement, uh, of, of talking to people, um, but also have a, a, a pretty good track record of delivering some great results and we can't, uh, wait to start having conversations with you uh, and putting those stuff into place. So just hi from me, uh, Garrett, you want to say hi?
Yeah, and, and we couldn't be more excited to be here and, you know, Jim mentioned, uh, studying for the RSP and it was using those principles and methodologies, we were able to achieve some amazing, amazing results together in Stanford and we were able to see some of the lowest crash rates in the, in the city's history. Um, and also we were able to, uh, get Stanford off of, of watch from ECT's list for, uh, pedestrian fatalities and bring that to some of the lowest, uh, incidences in the most recent years. And we're also able to achieve together some of the lowest bicycle crashes. So, um, we see a lot of opportunities here and, uh, are excited to, to meet everyone on the team.
Look who you're about to raise your hand, there you go.
Me?
Yes, Tom?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I just want to say that Lisa and I had the good fortune to meet Garrett and, uh, Jim yesterday and to walk around Row Eight and, you know, I think Lisa will probably echo this, we're incredibly impressed with their, you know, with their knowledge, creativity and as you can probably see, enthusiasm, and, and I think they're going to be an incredible asset to the city. I'm really excited to work with them, I think anybody who hasn't met them should go out there and meet them, get them to their neighborhoods, but it, it's welcome, I'm really excited to have you.
Thank you.
I had to say the same thing, Tom got there first, but, um, we walked these guys feet off, we almost got them killed a few times, um, on our streets and we figure like, we've got their attention now, so we're in good shape. But we really enjoyed meeting both of you and thank you for your, um, time and good ideas and we're looking forward to what we're going to do next with you.
Thanks, and don't think I don't know that you didn't plan that truck to nearly hit me.
I told you, it would work for our benefit if you got here.
Thanks.
Only kidding, only kidding.
I'm getting you here about East Norwalk as well, any other questions?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I just want to say I had an opportunity, uh, in, in echoing what Tom and Lisa have said, I had an opportunity to walk with, uh, Jim and Garrett around, uh, Wall Street and it was a fabulous afternoon. And, uh, the, the creativity and the conversation was wonderful and I, I just think this is amazing and I want to say welcome and I'm looking forward to great things, uh, for the city of Norwalk from you guys, so thank you for being here.
Thank you, and, and thank you guys for reaching out, I really do appreciate it.
Uh, yeah, we'll be getting together next week, uh, Jim and Garrett and I, and I'm very much looking forward to that. I may not be able to keep up so well, uh, because of my recent hip replacement surgery, but we'll, I'll hobble along. Uh, but whatever the case, I just, you know, we were talking, um, uh, in the Public Works, uh, meeting on Tuesday night about bikeability and walkability and I just really want to stress to you how important that is to the council members and to the city. And, you know, there's so many areas that, um, really need some help in terms of that. And so we just want to make sure that that's on your radar.
So I think if you, if you look anything about me, you know, that is the guiding principles, uh, of what we do. And, you know, it's, it's about creating an equitable network, um, one that works for all, uh, one that takes care of, of every single one of our users and, and values everyone. So we, you know, we look forward to, uh, to continuing that dialogue with you and, uh, you know, uh, with the, with the rest of the team. Hopefully we'll be, hopefully we're on a stretch where we're going to have some better weather, we could actually walk out, today was a little chilly. Uh, thank God we did, uh, it yesterday with you, Tom and Lisa versus today, uh, because I was out there today with someone, um, not a council member, but a community member, and it was quite cold.
So if you gentlemen don't mind, maybe we can invite you back periodically to get some updates, you know, after you guys get your feet wet.
Anytime, anytime.
Be happy to.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Good night, before I wrap this up, just a couple of things, um, first, uh, obviously, well, if you're not aware, next month's meeting is going to be about the capital budget, so I know we've all got our books, our very thick books. Um, I recommend in, 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 in that time, you start getting into the weeds and taking a look at it and also, uh, know that the mayor's recommendations are coming out March fifteenth and you'll be receiving that as well to insert into your books. So, um, for you those, so I guess everyone's been through the process already, but we're going to have every department head, uh, before us at the next planning committee meeting, uh, for you that don't remember, for those that don't remember, the planning committee is allowed to move money around, not add to the budget or take away, but to move money around. So if there's any projects, um, anything that, um, pops out at you, something you'd like, uh, some initiative, so forth, definitely spend the next month, uh, thinking about that and, uh, making, if any, making that proposal at the next planning committee. Uh, this is also something on the extent of the, the council as a whole. And what else, um, oh, and for that list Jessica sent out, uh, initiative, initiatives upcoming and projects that her department's working on. I know, uh, Barbara, you, you got back to, um, Jessica, we're interested in getting involved a few things, I believe. Um, hopefully you, you all have taken a look at it, it's something, you know, you want to, um, you know, kind of spearhead, be a part of, uh, get an update on, so I just wanted to remind you, if you, uh, haven't taken a look at a while, uh, that list, or if you need it again, let me know, let Jessica know, we'll get it back out to you. And, uh, yeah, so our next meeting will be fun-packed, with the capital budget and CDBG, so we're going to have a quite a long meeting. So maybe a short one this, this month isn't such a bad idea. Okay, I've said everything, uh, I needed to say, so if there's no objections, I will now call for a motion to adjourn. Lisa, all in favor? Okay, great, all right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, good night.